So let's move forward on the guidelines for the Honda Emergency Co-Marketing Grant. Again, this is for businesses within the Honda City Limits. Businesses located in the ETJ do not qualify. Businesses must do their best to apply for the grant prior to launching the advertisement. Businesses must be privately owned and must be in a tourism service-related industry, to include retail food and beverages. Advertisements must adhere to the support proper socially distancing guidelines as adopted by the city of Honda. Example, the promotion of your website, free shipping. Each business is eligible for 100% reimbursement for a maximum of $50 per month for a maximum of two months for their initiative during this emergency. Qualifying advertisements are limited to so-
The city manager, yeah. There's a lot of echo. People can't hear what we're saying.
That was, I think, before. I think we've corrected-
Right now.
Josh, Eddie, can you hear me clearly out there?
Yes. Yeah, I have it on the phone.
So the city attorney is on the line and says she's not getting any of the echoing now.
Okay.
Okay, so qualifying, again, back to the last one. It says qualifying advertisements are limited to social media, web, and online marketing offers. Efforts, I'm sorry. So again, go to the next slide, and there is guidelines. The website creation is a qualifying expense and can be reimbursed. Qualifying advertisements may target potential customers in Honda but must primarily target potential customers from outside of the Honda City Limits. Months do not need to be consecutive for purposes of this grant. Applications will be reviewed at the time they are submitted. Qualifying advertisements can be combined to equal the maximum grant allowed per month. Go to the next slide. Again, moving on with the guidelines. The advertising must promote tourism and meet the Texas Hotel Occupancy Tax Code requirements. Again, this is to promote tourism in the city of Honda. All receipts must be turned in by August 31st, 2020 to receive reimbursement. And so we'll go to the next one. The next grant, which is the Hotel Occupancy Tax Emergency Payment, Deferral, and Forgiveness Program. This one particular grant will be funded by the city of Honda. So again, we developed this emergency deferral forgiveness program to assist the hotels within the city of Honda during this crisis. This program will be funded through the city of Honda, like I stated. The program will provide limited financial assistance through the deferral and forgiveness of hotel occupancy tax payments to hotels severely impacted as a result of the stay-at-home work-safe order that was implemented, again, by Medina County and the city of Honda. So again, this provides a 60-day deferral of hotel occupancy tax payments for April and May 2020 with an additional offering of forgiving up to $1,000 per month for a total of no more than three months of forgiven tax payments. This program has an aggregate of $9,000 available for hotels here in Honda. Again, there is a criteria to this grant as well. This is a program that can assist hotels that pay hotel taxes to the city of Honda and are in good standing on hot payments. Hotels wishing to apply for the program must meet this following criteria. Prior to submitting the application, please check that your hotel meets all the following qualifications: collects hot phones for the city of Honda; that they have experienced or projected to experience a decline in revenue between March 1st through May 31st, again, because of this crisis; experience or projected to experience a decline in employment as a result of this pandemic; is in good standing with the city of Honda with regards to licensing and finances, including being current on sales and use of tax payments; engaged in activities that are legal under city and state law; meet program technical requirements, including ability to provide financial records to support requests. So I know you're asking how we're going to be able to do this. And so the minute all of this started happening, Kim had our finance director start putting different numbers to make sure that where we're at within our budget. And as you recall, our budget for this year was $480,000. From October of 2019 to where we're at right now, in April 2020, we're at-
Or sales and tax income. Yeah, that's EDC, but-
That is correct. That is correct. I'm sorry, Economic Development Corporations Fund Sales Tax. That's correct. Right now, we have received $422,190. So we are short to that budget, but again, we always budget very conservatively. And as we look at March and April, and we move on past that, we're looking to still be ahead by $107,190 as an average. As we look, as our budget continues to grow, and she really budgets very conservatively, we look at the numbers month to month, and so we should end at the end of the year as a positive. So that's where I'll come up with $100,000.
If I can interrupt for just a minute. What's important to note is that we did look at March and April sales tax. Those were both in already, and those are on this sheet. You saw that we got $36,387, $36,358 for the EDC. Normally, we average about 41, 42, so we haven't seen that big of a dip in their sales tax. But we were conservative and went with $33,000 from May through September. And that, how we get to that final projection of how much we should be ahead. And this is because we had really good performing months in August, September of last fiscal year, and then October and November of this fiscal year.
I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, but do we know approximately how many small businesses that could probably qualify for these monies? How many we have in town?
We did run the numbers, and we do have several, several different businesses. From what we've seen in other towns, for example, Buda, that has launched something very similar to this, they're double our size. So they're right at, you know, 16,000, 17,000 population. So they have twice as many small businesses as we do. They have seen where they had about 50 small businesses apply. So we're anticipating maybe anywhere between 30, 40. It's all going to be depending on the assistance that each small business is looking at. And you and I both know that Honda, that's what makes Honda is the small businesses. So we're hoping that they all take advantage of this.
And additionally, I'd like to state that just because they apply for our program doesn't exclude them from applying for anything from the Small Business Administration.
Correct.
We highly encourage them to reach out and apply for the Payroll Protection Program and the small business grants and loans that are available, especially the Payroll Protection Program, because that will assist them with keeping their employees employed. And I know that one of the banks here in town stated yesterday that they'd already done over 11 million in loans and grants through the Small Business Administration here in Honda. So I know that people are already using that system. This is just meant to be an enhancement-
Right.
-and us giving back to the people that put funds into the sales tax fund. Without these businesses, we wouldn't have sales tax.
So again, as we look at the, I know that Kim went over this a couple of weeks ago about our CDs. And so, you know, the EDC owns a little over 63% of the $2.8 million of the CDs, which is 1.83 million as of December 2019, plus the interest earned this past quarter. And so when you look at the pooled cash that EDC has, we're a little over $200,000. And so that's where we will look at the other $200,000 to make these grants up.
And just to remind council, when we spoke about pooled cash at our last council meeting, when I was asked roughly how much we have to survive this pandemic, and I said we had 7 million that was in our pooled cash system, the biggest portion of that belongs to the utility funds, the EDC, that's the EDC's portion of that 7 million. It's 217.
217, yeah.
So between the two of them, two accounts, they've got over $2 million in there.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And total, what we're asking them to support is 305,000.
And so the last bullet point here is the hotel occupancy taxes. Estimating end of year will be about $230,871, which is the working capital balance. And again, a front reminder, we adjusted to take the $10,000 for the hangar dance for the race that's going to happen in September.
So the assumption is we can afford it at this point?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And again, this is for the sales tax, you know, the businesses that generate this for us. It's time to stand together and unite and to give back. And we care about the small businesses.
I can't speak for the EDC, but I kind of feel like if we need more money, they'd be willing to move forward with the program.
Yes, and that is one of the things that I wanted to emphasize, is that the EDC met yesterday, and they approved this four to one. And they had one person who was absent, and one person, the chairperson, doesn't typically vote unless to break a tie. I'd also like to just say publicly and remind everyone that these have nothing to do with your utility bills, and they have nothing to do with your property taxes.
Correct.
This is strictly the 8.25% that the state mandates in sales tax that is collected by the businesses in town. So the state keeps a portion of that, sends a portion back to the city, and it's divided between the city and the EDC. So this is nothing about property taxes or utility bills and will not negatively impact residents here in town. In fact, we're hoping it will help them because it's helping some of the small businesses and employers in town.
I think it was mentioned even, I think, by Councilman McInally and the chairman of the EDC, Bobby Ainsley, that what can be a better way to use-
Correct.
...money here than for small businesses that create the sales tax to start with.
Yes, sir. That is correct. Do we have any other questions? Do you have any questions?
Eric, you on?
Eric?
Yes, sir. Do you have any-
I don't have any questions.
And Michelle, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Only, so when you were talking about, just when you ended that last slide, you talked about the $10,000 in the hangar dance. But that money, we're going to contribute, they're going to kick it back?
We're hoping that that gets kicked back because, if you recall, we're combining the hangar dance with the street race that's going to be happening at the airport, and it's rescheduled for September. So our hotels at that time should be booming and full of people, and will probably regenerate a good portion of the sales tax that we're spending on that particular event. So again, you have significant funds, all things considered, in your hot funds. If we're projecting to end at $230,871, that's what hot funds is for, is to put back into the entities that are, again, supporting those hot funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by council? If not, do we have a motion to approve this small business COV-19 relief program?
I see a move.
Do we have a motion?
I need to exclude myself.
We haven't voted yet. We have a second?
And Michelle, you'll need a second.
Okay, I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the relief program, and I am going to go by rule call as we vote. And Michelle, yea or nay?
And Michelle, the mayor's asking you yea or nay on the vote?
Yes.
Eric, mayor's asking you yea or nay or abstain?
I need to abstain on this item, Kim.
Okay.
Mr. Villa?
Me, and I'm a small business owner. I'm going to have to abstain on the vote.
Okay, Mr. Vella?
Abstain as well.
Abstain, and Mr. McInally?
I vote yes.
So we have two votes in favor and three abstains, so the motion does carry. Well, thank you all. I think this is a great program, and I thank the EDC for their participation. And also, I just want to mention that a week ago today, I asked the city manager to-
At 4:45.
At what?
At 4:45.
A little late in the day, too, before Good Friday. But I asked her to, by this week, to have this special meeting on Wednesday and to come up with a plan that we could present to the EDC. Well, Wednesday for the EDC, Thursday for the council. And this is what they put together in, I'd say, three working days at the most. So I think we all should be very appreciative of that. Okay, moving on to the item number five, discuss and consider our utility relief plan for the city's utility customers. I would just like the city manager to tell us what presently being planned, and then I guess we need input if something else needs to be brought into it.
So currently, Mayor, what we're doing as the utility relief program is the city allows for two extensions normally in our ordinance. We're working with people as they come in and say that they've been impacted negatively by COVID-19 to either put them on extension plans, look at potentially adjusting some fees to work with them to help them out. And with council's permission, I think so far that's gone pretty well. So I would like to ask, request that you all continue to allow staff to look at these on a case-by-case basis, and we'll keep you informed about how many people this impacts and how many people are on payment plans or extended payment plans or the modifications moving forward.
Can you let us know, those that cannot pay at this time due to unemployment?
Currently, we have 100 people who have asked for some type of assistance, and we've been able to work with them. And we encourage anyone that is impacted by COVID that they come in and they pay what they can towards that bill, because at the end of all this, at some point, it's all going to be something that they have to catch up with. So we're, again, being as flexible as we can. As you know, we have done no disconnects for nonpayments since this started, and we have been working with the community, and we'll continue to do that because we do understand that there's been some big changes for a lot of citizens in our community. And we're doing the best we can without negatively impacting, as you know, the city tries to work off of a shoestring budget as well.
Yeah, I'd love to see us do something in the way of forgiveness of some bills, but I don't see, after looking at what other people are doing and how you separate those that have really been unemployed and hurt here compared to the ones that haven't been hurt. I think the paperwork and all by staff would be tremendous if we tried to do something like this. So what I'd recommend is that we, for right now, we go along with what we're doing and kind of see how it works. This thing is going to go on for another couple of months.
Yes, sir.
And we'll know more maybe next time the council meets as to how our people are handling their bills and all.
I can tell you that on the 15th of the month, we hit our normal amount of people that come in to pay on the 15th. So we're still seeing people that are coming in and paying their bill on time, and I think the stimulus check has helped with that sum, and I think people are continuing to be creative, so.
Counsel, do you all have any suggestions or wishes other than what we're doing now?
No, I just want to make, I think this is a good thing that we're doing, but the only thing is that we need to clarify to the customer that if they go on a pay plan or whatever we decide to do with them, that they are aware that the bill's going to have to be paid eventually, just so that they understand that, okay, we're not washing away the bill. The bill's, at one time or another, hopefully, when this thing is over with, everybody will be able to pay like normally like they're supposed to be paying, because it's not going to be a wash.
Yes, sir. Even in normal circumstances, we make sure that when anybody asks for an extension and goes on a payment plan, that they know eventually the bill's going to come due. So it helps every little bit you can put towards it and to stick with the payment plan. And again, right now, we're being very flexible, and I do know that staff up front, it's clearly indicated on the extension forms that at some point you are signing that you are responsible for this bill.
Anything else on that?
Eric, Rand, Michelle, do you all have comment on that?
No, ma'am. I don't.
No, I appreciate all you've done, and that's how I think we should move forward, exactly what you said, that you just are able to work with the customers, you and staff, and work with them on a as needed basis, how you're handling it, sounds good at this point.
Eric?
Eric said he had no comment.
Okay. That completes that item, and we go to item number six, adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that completes the first meeting that we have scheduled this afternoon. The second meeting is an emergency call, special city council meeting, that now will commence at 3:40. And again, we have a quorum check either by in-person or on the telephone. Excited in citizens' comments, and now we'll ask if you all are ready for Mr. Lopez's comment out there or not.
Yeah, my name is Chavel Lopez.
Who we have in the room right now.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. He could come in.
Ask him to come in and back to the back and... Need you to stay back there and give us his comment. You can give us our comments from there, Mr. Lopez?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Chavel Lopez. I'm a candidate for city council for place four for the third election. And today I wanted to speak, I just wanted to say that I applaud the council, you know, for helping out the small businesses. And also, I noticed that in San Antonio, also have some money to help out some of the rent, some of the folks that lost their jobs also and don't have the means to pay their rent if they don't end up in the street, you know. Maybe the city has some type of funds or some for some of those folks. The other thing I want to say is that I support the mask versions, that if we go into a business, that we should be wearing a mask, you know. The fact is that a lot of us, you know, the majority of us have been tested, and some of us, some of us don't show any symptoms, and we can, you know, contaminate other people. So that's, you know, that's the reason I wear a mask, I don't want to be contaminating anybody else, you know. And I don't want anybody else contaminating me, because I don't know if I have it or not, you know. And so I support that, you know, the council support, you know, the ordinance on the masks if we go into HEB or any other business, place of business, that we have to wear a mask and, you know, the social distance of six feet. And the other thing I want to talk about is the, I heard also that the county, that the city also is having some type of favoritism with some of the departments, because some, I heard that some folks are working 30 hours and they get paid for 40 hours, and yet other departments have to work the whole 40 hours, get paid for 40 hours, you know. And I want to know why, you know, the, why the inequality there. And the other thing that I want to talk about is the city workers, all of the city workers here in Honda are essential workers, and that they should be given some type of hazardous pay for having to work during this pandemic, during this coronavirus period, you know, that we, that we give the city workers some type of hazard pay for having to be out there to do services to all the residents and the citizens here in Honda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to read my line first.
And then I need clarification if you need me to read Mr. Barlow's again for the record for this meeting.
I think you're going to have to, so go ahead and do that while I'm getting this up.
Okay. This is from Scott Barlow with Cecil Motors. "I wanted to express my thoughts to you after reading the paper this morning about the potential addition of more restrictions being considered for Honda. As our governor and president talk of easing restrictions and trying to get the country and state back to work, I see our city moving in the opposite direction, at least perception-wise, it appears that way. My thoughts, which I am hoping catch on universally, is that we need to quarantine, mask up, restrict movements of the population that is at high risk, not the other 95% of the population that is at little risk. Nursing homes, people with underlying medical conditions are the ones that are vulnerable to this virus. Most of the population that has had this virus had no symptoms or cold-like symptoms. We need to protect our vulnerable population but not economically strangle the other 95% of our population. My father fits into the vulnerable part of the population, so I do have a dog in this fight, and I am delivering groceries and making sure he has everything he needs and he is not leaving the house, which makes sense to me. But why would I deprive young, healthy citizens the ability to make a living? We need to replace the word essential with minimum risk. Making a living and providing for your family is probably the most essential thing a person can and will ever do. Thank you. You have my support." Next, we have one from Scott Lineball. "I, Scott Lineball, protest the fifth mayoral declaration scheduled for the 16th of April at 3:30 PM. I work in and live just outside Honda City Limits and pay taxes to the town and school district. I am protesting my disapproval of Section 6 and 8 mainly, but in general, all of the sections and orders 1 through 11 on this proposal. This goes against constitutional rights and religious freedom and life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Plus, it is not a demand by the government, just a recommendation to for-force people to wear them is a violation of the First, Ninth, Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution, also Section 6, 8, 19, 28, 29 of the Texas Constitution. No martial law has been declared, and the President Trump and Governor Abbott have not mandated such actions that violate constitutional and religious freedoms. I believe the blood of Jesus and God's word and promise protect me, and I trust in Jesus and the word of God. As a town that hold pride on faith in God, remember God as I control. And we must keep our faith and trust in Jesus through the tribulation in the wilderness. Thanks to all, and Jesus loves you. God bless. Sincerely, Scott Lineball." This one is from Bradley Price. "With the recent movement to begin opening the country and the governor's recent statement about beginning to open Texas in response to the leveling off of the coronavirus, has the city began preparing plans or a task force to address the reopening of Honda?" This was a phone call this morning from a Mr. James Ellis. He called stating he was watching the Facebook Live meetings and has concerns. He stated he agrees with the Hispanic gentleman that wanted everyone to have to wear masks, went out in public, and was disappointed and felt that was the stupidest question he had ever heard, that the mayor asked who's going to enforce it. He stated that is what we have police officers for. He continued to add that the police officers are not enforcing the six-feet-apart rule or do anything about enforcing any safety precautions to ensure minimal spreading. He has witnessed the police officers not wearing gloves or face masks and feel that it is not right, as they can be infected and spread the virus quickly. Mr. Ellis believes that if the police officers start issuing the tickets for $1,000 or more than the word, will spread, and people will start staying home and following the rules when they need to go out. He believes that even when the people have to go to court, that the judge should dismiss the ticket or lower the fine. The issuing of the ticket is what will help right now. At the end of the conversation, Mr. Ellis stated he knows, he does not know everything that is going on and that everyone here is in the position they're in because they know more and understand things. He just believes more precautions would help keep the virus from spreading so much here in town."
And all of yours?
Those are all mine.
I have one that I got this afternoon from Linda Hook. This is Linda Hook. This is Hook, Hook family. "We just wanted to know that we support your decision, and we feel it's about time of everybody wearing masks, including food servers, people at checkouts, and so on and so forth. We think it should have been done a long time ago, especially people handling our food. That's one reason why we have not been going into the fast-food restaurants, because nobody's wearing masks." the fast food restaurants because nobody's wearing masks or gloves, like they said so. But we support you and appreciate you taking care of us. Thank you very much, Linda Hook." So, is that all of them?
Mayor Ann Michelle says she can't hear you, so can you move your mic in a little?
I wonder if that shouldn't, or you shouldn't be closer to us, because I don't think she's gonna be able to hear us very well if you want to just move your chair up or whatever.
Put the phone up there.
Problem is, the attorney's texting me on my phone too.
Oh. What if you sat up here?
I can.
Yeah, can you hear me better now?
Yes, sir, I can. Thank you.
Eric, can you hear me better?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Well, then we'll go into the item number four, which is discuss and consider the Fifth Mayoral Declaration of Local State of Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency. You've been submitted two different variations of this declaration. One of them reads, I'm mainly talking about the item that we're talking about today. It said that, the first one says, "CD recommends wearing cloth face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, example grocery stores and pharmacies. Therefore, this declaration requires the use of cloth face covering to slow the spread of the virus and may be used as additional voluntary public health measures whenever a person leaves their home or essential business. Face masks must be used by restaurant workers as well as employees of all essential businesses that have face-to-face contact with the public. Such cloth face coverings can be fashioned from household items or from common materials at low cost." So that's the first one, which basically requires masks be worn by everybody leaving their, their home. The second one closely, more closely mirrors what y'all looked at the other day and that, but I made him change the wording a little bit because I thought that other one was a little confusing. This is CD. "CD recommends wearing cloth face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, example grocery stores and pharmacies. Therefore, this declaration requires the use of cloth face coverings when visiting hospitals, medical, or veterinarian clinics. It is recommended that face masks be used whenever a person leaves their home or essential business. It is recommended that face masks also be used by restaurant workers as well as employees of all essential businesses that have face-to-face contact with the public. Such cloth face masks can be fashioned from, from household items or made at home from common materials at low cost." So, other than needing to change the date, dates on this declaration, that's item number 11 is what we're looking at. So, the only thing I think even if we, we, we adopt the resolution or the declaration that says voluntary for everybody but the hospitals, I still think we need to have the restaurants and their employees involved as being mandatory. That's where we are, so now I'm open for comments.
Mayor, I, I would agree. I like the wording.
Speak up so they can.
Okay. I, I like the wording in the second version, except for the part where it said it is recommended that face masks also be used by restaurant workers, et cetera, and, and people that have essential businesses that have face-to-face contact. I think we need to go ahead and, and say they must wear them. I think we can stay with it is recommended that face masks be used whenever a person leaves their home or essential business, but then say we require that face masks also be used by restaurant workers as well as employees of all essential businesses that have face-to-face contact.
Well, the key there you mentioned is all other essential businesses that have face-to-face contact. So that would go back to the first one that I read. So, that wouldn't, depending on what y'all want, that wouldn't, wouldn't work. So.
It, the, well.
We'd have to leave that in other essential businesses.
So, Mr. Dan, I was, I was, what might you, I was.
Hello?
This is the mayoral, that's what you, with the change of the order number 11, being as it's written, as you just read.
So you want to leave it, you want to leave it alone?
See, it was recommended. Yep, is that, that's exactly when you read, just with a little bit of different wording on Monday at our meeting, correct?
Yes.
But we, we still gotta vote on this, right?
Yes.
Right.
It's our recommendation. I don't know if it's a motion or.
I, I. The only thing that I don't like about this order is that it's recommended. I think it ought to be mandatory that every restaurant employees wear a mask. Where, it's just like the, the person that, on the citizen comments, that that's the reason they don't go to restaurants or fast food because people aren't wearing their masks, they don't have, they're not wearing gloves. And I think it should be mandatory for, for them to wear masks and possible gloves. And I'm still in favor of the grocery stores, Walmart and HEB, the people that walk in there need to wear a mask. Otherwise, I've, I've, I've heard two council people say that, that we're not there yet. The thing is, we don't want to get there. And if we, we try everything that we can to, to avoid from getting there, it'd be the best way to, to agree on these declarations that we're, we're approving. So.
I. Your recommendation is that, that it be for, like the second one, but it would include restaurant workers or you're talking about all masks for, for everything?
I, I think, I think for everything. Now, but, now, if this thing needs to be reworded, it's just like people say, well, the president and the governor say this and say that, okay. But people need to understand that the governor gave the power to the mayors of every city that we can go far and beyond what Greg Abbott or President Trump wants us to do. And, and I feel that at this time, I, I don't know how many coronaviruses, people, cases we have in the county. What I got off of that yesterday was 15.
It is right now.
Fifteen and two deaths.
Fifteen and two deaths.
Yeah, I think four recoveries.
And out of the 15, how many, how many are in Hondo?
Two.
No, out of the 7-8-8-6-1.
We got 13, 15 in the county.
There's seven out of 7-8-8-6-1.
Okay, there's, there's 15 and, 15 in the county and, and Hondo itself is more than half of the 15 that we have in the county.
Our zip code is more than half.
Our zip code is the one that has the most.
Two did on city limits.
Yeah, which is not really public, but except to, anyway, yes.
But, you know, Mayor, this is just my opinion. I, I think that we gotta be as strict, as strict as we can to keep from this pandemic to getting, getting any further than what it is. We can't wait and approve these declarations when, when, when it's too late. We need to prevent it now.
Well, I, I just want to say that, that even though we've had 15 cases so far in, in Medina County, there's no telling how many cases yet that we don't know about.
Right.
Because a lot of the people haven't gone through the full testing process or have the results back. Uh, Mr. Vella?
I'm kind of split. I see it both ways. You know, all, all the evidence that I've, I've seen, you know, gloves are just as bad as transmitting the disease. Masks, I, I get it, it's a, it's a preventative thing. I'm, I'm, I'm with Mr. Mack. If we can find a happy medium in, in the second one.
Well, first of all, how many want to go ahead and get the restaurant workers with, with, with masks and gloves?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I agree with that.
Anybody agree with that?
No.
Okay. Then the question is, masks for everybody or just, are we required for the hospitals and the restaurant workers?
Mayor, the, we, we have two order elevens before us, and I like everything in the first one because it does require the restaurant workers and it requires people to wear them. My concern with the first one is that it says cloth face covering must be used as additional voluntary public health measure whenever a person leaves their home or essential business. And that essentially, what that says is that when I leave my house to walk over to the track to get exercise, as I go from my house to there, anywhere I'm out of my house, I have to wear a mask. And.
I don't know how we'd get to.
I don't know how we would, that, and I'm not sure how to reword it, but what I'm saying is I agree with the, with everything in the first version, except the, essentially we're saying you gotta wear a mask all the time.
Me, that's what it says. Everybody wears a mask when they leave the house. Doesn't, doesn't differentiate between anybody. So, but then the second one just has the.
Recommendation.
Has the recommendation for the hospital, the clinics, and the vet clinics, and, and everybody else doesn't have to wear a mask when they're out. And that's where I want to include restaurant workers, but there's, there's our impasse kind of as to where we go for that. So how, how many of y'all think we ought to have masks worn by everybody when they leave house if we can? How many of y'all in favor of that?
I am.
Mr. Villa?
No.
Okay. And everybody else is against that? Is that right?
So, Mr. Dan, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Well, we're still discussing.
Well, we can make a motion. We can continue discussion. Go ahead and make a motion.
That we approve this fifth generation, order number 11, to include your order as it's written and just to add in the required use of cloth face covering visiting hospitals to restaurants, we would include the restaurant workers in that portion of it.
Okay, y'all have heard the motion. Do we have a second to that?
I'll switch it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, it's discussion on that motion.
Yeah, I have a question of Councilman Long. We have two orders before us, so you're essentially amending the first order or the second order?
Second.
Second.
So the second one, Mr. McNally, where it's, where is recommended.
Change that.
What would be required would be, the hospitals, the medical, and veterinarian clinics, and we would add the restaurants in there. So those would be required.
I, I can go with that.
Well, that, that, that basically covers everything except for HEB and Walmart.
No, that. No, we've already covered.
Well, that, that covers everybody not having to wear a mask except for the hospital and, and the restaurants.
Well, and those are essential, those are face-to-face contact with the public.
Well.
So, so she made a motion.
For number two. The second one. Well, you have them back to back.
Mayor, we need to, we need to.
Ma'am?
We need to, we need to keep in mind that, would you have options for COVID? Just getting a hold of a mask even here at the hospital that I'm sitting now? They, they came to fight me.
Yeah.
We're gonna have, first, it's, it's, we said, if I, we're getting from the city Hondo, if you're gonna give me a ticket, but I'm gonna get a trip home, where, where do you think we should put, begin all this mask? Because there's none of that. And I'm, I'm in town 21 hours we speak, and these people have to, they just take them an hour to find me a mask to transfer me downstairs to get a dictionary. That's how bad it is.
Well.
You know, it's one of those deals that we do need to, to kind of approve this declaration. I agree with it, but we also need to keep in mind, we, we have, we have a large, we have a large problem in, in, that's something I, I just, I just need to share that with you guys because it's bad. It's bad over here, it's, it's, even in the hospital. So you can imagine how it's gonna be in Hondo.
Well, I can, I can just tell you what, in talking to the hospital administrator, their main problem is people coming in there to the clinics and all, not wearing masks. And even though they, they stop them there and screen them, they, they don't have any way to require that they wear a mask in there. And that's a real concern to them at the hospital and should, and the clinics because they had a lot of people going into clinics. And so, that, that's the main concern. And, and she says, you know, they, they even give out some masks. They don't have a lot, but they give out masks to people. So I think the mask thing, I think the mask thing is, you know, like somebody said, you can make a mask out of a handkerchief or a pair of underwear or whatever. I mean, masks can be made. And, and I think that can be available, but for those critical industries like the hospital, we need to try to accommodate what they need to have done.
I, I agree with you 100%.
So, just essentially, in the order that we're recommending here, that, that we're about to vote on, we're changing where it says it is recommended that face masks be used by restaurant workers, we're gonna say it is required. And I can live with that and leave the rest of it.
Yeah, however we get, we want to tell Mr. Garza how to, how to word it. And then it has to be like we're talking about Ms. Long's, uh, motion.
And he's listening.
Okay. Are you listening, Mr. Garza?
He'll say yes on my, he'll text me, yes. He's not on the call.
So, so the motion is made that hospitals and clinics and restaurants are required to wear masks?
And any essential business that has face-to-face contact with the public.
Well, that would be HEB and Walmart.
Exactly.
That's why it needs to be, it's not what I gather we want. We want it to, you know, not restrict people from going in the grocery store, not only restrict people going to the hospital or the restaurants as far as wearing masks. That's why it's gotta be worded different than what it is here.
I, I take the wording to mean that it's the people who are working in those establishments that have face-to-face, not the customer.
Right, right.
But the person that's working in the establishment, not the customer.
Well, for the restaurants and, and the hospitals, it's important for the customers to wear a mask in there. That's, that's, the hospital administrators' main concern is the.
Well, can we separate?
Yes.
But this says, "Declaration requires the use of cloth face coverings when visiting hospitals, medical, and veterinarian clinics." We're requiring that.
So you can add the word restaurants. And then say it's recommended when doing face-to-face business.
With the, even with essential businesses.
But that's just for employees.
Yes.
Well, but with the order also.
It's gotta be for the clients too.
Well, in, in the first one, it is the restaurants, the hospitals, the clinics, the vet clinics. But I think the part about wearing them with essential businesses to conduct face-to-face, it's recommended.
Right.
That essential businesses wear them when dealing with customers face-to-face.
And really, we want, if I go pick up a meal, I ought to be wearing my mask, just like the restaurant worker that gives me the meal. Same thing with the clinic. When you go in, you need to be wearing a mask.
But this is what the order says.
Well, the order is very, to me, still confusing, but.
Well, it says, "This declaration requires the use of cloth face coverings when visiting hospitals, medical, and veterinarian clinics. It is recommended that face masks be used whenever a person leaves their home or essential business. It is required that face masks also be used by restaurant workers as well as."
Recommended, it doesn't say we're required.
But that we're gonna, we're gonna.
We're gonna change it.
We're gonna change it. "It is required that face masks also be used by restaurant workers as well as employees of all essential businesses that have face-to-face contact with the public." And then it says, you know, there is.
I would think we just need to change that sentence that talks about visiting hospital, et cetera, and restaurants. Somehow we gotta include their employees, though.
But it.
Well, wouldn't that take care of it if we just say recommend out and put required in there?
In which sentence?
In, in, well, we need to do it for, for the hospitals and clinics for sure.
Right, that's in here.
Okay. And then required for the. And then required for the restaurant workers and employees as well as the essential businesses that they, that they have face masks, face-to-face, when they're face-to-face contact with the public.
Right.
So...
The only thing, that is fine there, the way it's worded, except that we changed the recommended down here for restaurant workers, where it says it's required instead of recommended.
Right.
But, my deal is, I'm still concerned about Walmart and HEB, people going, we have people from out of town going in, and the, and the employees at HEB complain about that.
Okay, so, the attorney said, "What about grocery stores? Restaurant workers mandatory, but not when you go into grocery stores?"
That's based on what we're talking about. That's what some of us are talking about. I think Johnny's talking about everybody.
I, I think the divide, if there is one, is between, uh, workers, employees, we're saying should wear, and some of us are saying that patrons should also wear. And it's going to be very, very, very difficult to require all patrons to do that.
Well, except at the clinics.
Except at the clinics, which is prudent, you know?
Well, I, I think it's going to be difficult anywhere, but we need to have it in right, we need to have the declaration specify what we want. Now, we are, I know and you know that people aren't going to do it. Everybody's not going to do it, but we need to have it in our declaration that that's what we want. It's just like gatherings. We, we've said not more than 10 people, they're, they're still doing it. And it's hard to enforce everything, but we need to have it in the declaration the way we want it to before this thing gets out of hand. I know we're not there, but I don't want to get there.
Well, like I talked to Mr. Simons, you know, I said, "What you need to do is redo your sign out there and have the sign say it's mandatory that if you come into the clinic, you have to wear a mask."
Right.
Now, they're not going to turn them around and send them home, but they're going to think about that next time they come to the clinic or to the hospital, hopefully. So, you're right, you can't make everybody do it, but as long as we have it as a mandatory declaration, I think that we can enforce it.
Right. How about, how, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Danner, can we get back to the motion? Can we have it, I'm being here, seconded.
We're still discussing the motion. If, if anybody wants to amend the motion or whatever, that's still on the table.
Go ahead.
I, I would move to amend the motion to change the wording in the sentence in order number 11, which pertains to restaurant workers, where it now says it is recommended, we say it is required that face masks also be used by restaurant workers as well as all employees of all essential businesses.
You got to drop the "all essential businesses."
Yeah, because that's to include a lot of businesses.
You got to omit the "all essential businesses."
Chapter Supply.
Yeah.
Walmart.
Parker.
If they have face-to-face contact with the public, that's the concern.
That goes back to Mr. Villa's.
Yeah.
But, but what we're talking about is the workers, and, and so...
That's, that's not what he's talking about.
He's talking about clients, too.
Clients as well.
I'm talking about worker, employees, workers, and patrons that go into the businesses.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that, I understand the concerns, no way around that. It's almost as if we need an order number 12 that says, "When you leave your house and you go into a business, please cover up."
I would like to see us have a consensus that Ms. Long can, can adapt to her motion and, and we can get it passed.
That, that would be fine.
Which, I think, basically, is her motion was, hospital, clinics, vets, and restaurants. To me, workers and clients should be the motion.
Can we add grocery stores to that?
Do you hear that?
So, my motion, that, that's what I, that's what I intended in the motion, if you're pointing to the clinic. You know, the, the customer visiting the clinic and the people working in the clinic, count that on. And, and I included all those, and the restaurants, that was my motion, yes, sir.
Okay.
Can we add groceries to that, grocery stores?
Okay, no, that's not part of my motion.
Well, that, that would be HEB and Walmart.
That would have to be an amendment to our motion if, if, and you started off with an amendment. You still got that amendment working on, or did you draw it?
My, my amendment, if I, if I do it, it would need a second, of course, would be that it's, we say, "It is required that face masks also be used by restaurant workers as well as employees of all essential businesses that have face-to-face contact with the public to include grocery stores."
That's an amendment.
That would be my amendment.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment?
And so, the amendment includes what?
Grocery stores.
All essential businesses.
And all essential businesses.
That have face-to-face.
Basically, it goes back to Mr. Villa's thoughts.
And so, employees and patrons?
No. No, it says, "Face masks be used by restaurant workers as well as employees of all essential businesses that have face-to-face contact with the public, including grocery stores."
But that's not the patrons.
That's pretty much...
That is not the patrons. The patrons are addressed in the sentence before that, where we say, "It is recommended that face masks be used whenever a person leaves their home or essential business."
Well, that's my recommendation.
So you have an amendment?
I, I don't, I don't know why it's so difficult for us to pass this declaration including patrons. That's, that's where the most concern is about us not wanting to get to the point where things are, are going to get worse than what they are.
Okay, we had a motion in a second on the amendment. Does everybody understand the amendment? All in favor of the amendment by voice, vote, and Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Now, the amendment included grocery stores, and Michelle?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
That's Eric.
That's Eric for yes. Mr. Vella?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
And Villa?
The only thing I don't agree with is not having the patrons wear masks. I'm in favor of all the employees and, and food handlers and everybody wearing that, but I still think that we need to put the patrons in there.
So your vote is a no?
So my vote is a no.
Okay. The amendment motion passes. We go back to the original motion, which was Ms. Long's, which would now include this amendment. Any further discussion on that?
I'd just like to add something, that they just got a call up front from an HEB employee who said they are already required to wear masks in their store.
Exactly.
But he's got all essential businesses, he's got all essential businesses in that motion.
Okay.
And the other, the other essential businesses, I believe essential businesses are in both, are in both versions.
So, I think, I think we already had a five-one, or a one-two, or one...
Right. But, but is the other essential, now we're discussing the amended motion.
No, we've passed the amended motion.
No, we passed the amended motion.
We have passed the amendment.
Four to one.
Now, we're back to the original motion.
Right.
That includes your amendment to the motion.
Right, right. So, the, the other essential businesses in addition to, for instance, going into a, a convenience store, where you have face-to-face...
Auto supply.
Auto supply.
They're going to have to wear their masks.
Correct.
So now we need a mo, a vote, according to the attorney, on the motion, so...
Right.
Okay, if the discussion is over on the motion with the amendment. Okay, roll call. All in favor of the motion as amended, vote aye, starting with Ms. Long. Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Villa?
No.
Mr. Vella?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Motion passes, four to one. Okay. Now, would you text him and tell him if he can prepare that?
He's on it. I just ask him if he understood.
Before, before these guys leave, I want them to take a look at it. But that, I think that completes the action on, on this, oh, the other thing, I need a motion to extend our declaration for 30 days from today.
And, second. And there is a phrase in one of the wherances that needs to be updated.
For the, for the period of time?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Aye.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
Some of...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, too, for calling in. Motion is, the meeting is adjourned.